Let us allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, call to order, Sack Harbor HPARB meeting of June 8th, 2023. And I would like a motion to approve the minutes of May 11th, 2023.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And then we need a motion for the correspondence requiring action, 37 Glover Street. They're requesting a two-year extension of HPARB approval from July 23rd to 2021, of 2021. I need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You guys should just take turns. All right. And then we'll move on to the public hearing. Again, we need a motion to open.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to begin with 100 Glover Street.
This flat roof garage is in this, using the previous one?
Only thing that has changed is we had asked for a fully developed landscape plan and indicating species which we've delivered to you, architecturally is the same exact house.
David, Phil Martin, he just is on at the moment.
Okay.
Came on and came off, so just please hold on one minute.
So you want us to wait? Okay. Everybody, sorry, ask back, take a deep breath. You got what?
Two for ones, right?
Yeah, yeah, I did, and I thought they were fine.
So, what is... So we can...
We're good.
We can continue? There he is, hello. Okay, so we are on public hearing. We've opened the public hearing, 100 Glover Street. Anybody have any input they'd like to give?
Is it, is it us first and then the public?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we covered it last time.
Yeah, I, I would just say that considering that it is a very, very, very large house, that the fact that it's been kept low and, as you say, push, pushes back from the front, from the street, that it's very well done to keep it looking not so huge.
Yeah, and I, I like the style of it being like, you know, to me, I would almost, it's really not barn-like, but it is. And so that to me goes along with what was there.
Yeah.
We're good?
Yeah.
Okay. Any public input? So, I would entertain a motion. Oh, excuse me, I have to close the public.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor? Aye. So now I would, I would, I guess, need, take a motion, yeah, need a motion for...
Motion to approve 137 Glover Street.
Is that... It's 100.
100.
100. Second.
For new construction, pool, etc.
Second landscape plan and everything, yeah, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, have a great evening.
Thank you. We're gonna try, but today's the 8th, correct? Up here? Okay, so it's 6, 8. Next, a public hearing would be, or I think it's actually a continued public hearing, would be 12 Union. Do I have to open it again? No, we're good to go?
Didn't we just close it?
We closed the first house, the first.
Open the second?
It, it's continuing. Okay. I believe it.
It's another rules by now, but...
I'm counting on it.
Aye. Oh, good.
He's giving us a smaller one?
Oh, the smaller one would be better.
Yeah.
Thank you. These are the...
The surveys are all large, can't really reset this far. Good evening, my name is David in Pittsburgh, representing the owner of 12 Union Street. Just as a quick refresher, in front of the board back in March, at the discussion room, I was quite the board raised concern with windows, and then we did a site visit at the end of March and April, we were here on the public hearing. We heard from the board, we heard from the public, those comments, and made a lot of additions to the plan. As we can see, we added more lamp saving, more vegetation, more buffer. We decreased the size and proposed additions by 1,270 feet. We reduced the footprint, we reduced square footage by 530 square feet. And so, based into plans, we ended them today. So it could be a part of things, the additions and the renovations, the construction and thing that store care some maintenance.
So I, I would agree with you, and I appreciate that you, you know, took our suggestions and, and went with it. So let's start maybe Zach, do you, are you...
I just have a couple of questions because you know, we have very elegant, very colorful. Are the, are the chimneys presently whitewashed?
Door, door is the base.
I'm sorry, I also joined here tonight, I might think that's the...
Thank you.
Because that makes the house look rather...
We were pulling from the, from 28th Street.
Right.
As a, as a sort of...
Yep.
Are they whitewashed or painted white?
They're whitewashed and the base of the house is as well.
Is there a picture in the packet of the house next door? I, I see...
There's something kind of modern.
I see 191 main.
Aesthetic. And, and having a house within the vicinity that's also doing it, doesn't make it any better, sort of compounds the visual impact. Is that a necessary aesthetic or a want?
Um, it was a, I think it was a bit of a response to the neighboring property, wanting to sort of keep things lighter.
So the neighbors went down that route, so you're following down, down the whitewashed hole, so to speak. I would just comment that it's, it's not historic, it doesn't improve the histor- you know. What, what you do with what you're designing to build new is all new regardless of course. But it needs to be harmonious to that which you're keeping. And I would just suggest that whitewashing the chimneys is not historically, it's kind of the first step toward cleaning things up because things are starting to fall apart. And then after we go through that, now we paint them, and if things are in really bad shape, if the bricks are really falling apart, you gotta rebuild the darn thing. So it's a repair, it's an early cosmetic solution.
So are you, are you...
So I would recommend not whitewashing.
Okay. Are you open to, to having them red brick? Is that what you'd like, is that what you think, red brick?
I think that would be more...
Are you open to that?
And, and are you saying that is for both chimneys or just the one historic one?
I think all chimneys should look a lot like red.
Yeah, I agree, to be the same, right?
Yeah.
And, and you said you're whitewashing the brick foundation too?
It was, that was also...
That's just poking out in a little couple places, but again, that would not be...
Sure. I think, I think we would want to remain sort of harmonious and put just the red brick, so.
Okay.
Okay, good, this is...
Good.
Is this a, a new color for the exterior from the other?
It is, it's a lighter gray. We pulled from an existing house, uh, that had been approved house over on Howard Street, which is a more warm gray. Kind of, kind of cool down the, what was before very white.
Yes.
Just kind of calm it down.
It, it's, I think this is an improvement over what you had.
And so are we good with the, talking about the house? You got anything you want to say?
No, I agree with the brick though, although, you know, the whitewash goes with the palette of the house.
All the more reason not to have it be whitewashed.
And the landscape plan, everyone's taking a look, takes a look at that? We're good?
Where is it?
Wrong person.
Right on the right.
This thing, yeah.
And there's not any pumice on there.
There's one window that's indicated to be an existing window that's going to be moved. Where did I see that?
It's on the side.
Yeah, is, where is it being moved? Where did I see?
It's, yeah, A200, the second elevation.
Down to bottom.
Yeah, it's just, it's, we just wanted to run it to work with the interior layout, but it's, but the idea would be to retain the actual unit itself.
Where...
That's on the side?
Yeah, it's on the left side of the house.
Right. Yes.
That would be the west.
If you say so, yes, I would imagine.
Northeast.
It's going up Union towards...
These are all numbered, so I've got one, I've got two.
It's A200.
I've got one and two, A200.
Yes.
Two.
A second floor window says exist to relocate. So I'm curious as to where it's going.
It's, that's, that's, sorry, that's the final location. It's probably about 12 inches to, from that location.
Oh, okay.
Or just shifting.
I see. Um, well, it looks like it aligns with other windows, so.
Yeah.
Is that that finding the red print from there?
Yes.
Yes.
There are some...
The full scale, yes. Don't need to buy better magnifiers, I think.
Fooling around with 24 by 36.
I agree. Needing the microphone. And are we good?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Uh, any public input? Okay, Mr. Kelly, come on up.
Christopher Kelly, Timmy Latham, Shay Kelly, Juven and Corderaro, I'm here for the neighbor, I'm from Darrow, who's at 21 Jefferson Street. So this is a letter to you on dated April 27th, when the application's on. My client's concern is about the configuration of the lot that's proposed, particularly the location of the access very close, basically on the property line. Also, we noticed in the course of looking at that, that the application computer requires some variances. The code says that because the property fronts on two streets, it has two front yards. There's no accessory structure permitted in a front yard. So by relocating the pool, they've triggered the need for variance. Also by putting in this driveway triggered the need in the code for, and I cited all the sections in the code that I referenced. Requires a dry well to benefit that driveway, and also a setback of at least five feet to the parking. And I think that's been addressed in the new plan, I'm not sure.
Have you seen the new plan?
I, it was emailed to me last night.
Okay.
Uh, but the, I, what I saw was the pool was still proposed to be relocated, which requires variance. So I would submit to the board that it's premature to look at the rest of the aspects of the application until it's gone to the zoning board because there may be a new configuration here that comes out, that is from zoning board, or the fields of foundation. But with all that being said, the main concern as I mentioned is the access driveway. I think it's more likely to have access on Union Street, there's a strict place to... But at the very least, there should be a setback from, of the driveway proposed, we would propose 30 feet setback. And I also mentioned in this, in the letter, that the reconfiguration of the slot suggests that there's a possible future plan to propose variances to divide it into two lots, creating a a flag strip lot and a square lot. And I understand that the office says, oh, no, no, that's not my intention. Then maybe he's willing to covenant to that as part of his approvals here before this board and, and the zoning board appeals. So we would submit to you that the, at the very least, we need to get the driveway moved and more separation from the property line, greater screening. But we also think this application is premature here at this time and requires variances before it goes forward. Have any questions?
I'd, I'd like to hear from our lawyer about what has just been said.
He's muted.
Can we open him up there?
Sorry. I, I would say that the board is allowed to continue its deliberation. We should refer the application to the building inspector to see if those are really what needed. And I understand that Mr. Kelly is a good lawyer, but the person that makes that determination is the building inspector. And you can continue your review of this application in comment with respect to the subdivision, I mean, with your supplication. So I think that those comments should be disregarded, and if the subdivision application is made at some point in the future, the planning board will deal with that. Planning and zoning.
David, do you have a comment on the need for variance for the relocation of the swimming pool? Because I did discuss this with Liz, and she agreed with me when I brought it up.
Well, well, yeah, I'm, I'm covering for Liz, and I don't take questions from the audience. So if the board has a question for me, I'll answer that, but I think in the board is allowed to consider this, whether another board asked a path on relief is up to the building inspector. But I think you're allowed to continue your review.
Um, would you like to respond?
So I went to Chris Talbot with Chris Kelly's letter, and we went over it in detail. And we also searched the records for possible prior variances. And Chris Talbot did come to the conclusion that the pool's a preexisting non-conforming structure, and we are allowed to relocate it, especially because we are bringing it into further compliance with the code. I need to make a determination that a variance is not required.
All right. I mean, we would have, I would think that we would have received that information.
Even if it's so, we can still vote on this design, because they have to come back, they have to come back.
Right.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't come to you unless
it was... And located. I, I would agree with that.
And I would also like to address some of the other comments, the, the drywall configurations, usually those are included in engineering plans. I don't think it's quite traditional to supply those to the ARB, but they will absolutely be included in the plans for the building permit. We did move the driveway over to be in compliance five feet away from the boundary line, and we added additional buffer and vegetation. We also applied for a curb cut from the village, and we were granted approval for that.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, the other gentleman behind you, Chris. The neighbor. Isn't he? No, this is a mister, this is somebody who's back on Jefferson.
My name is Ed Jerome, I'm on Jefferson Street. And, you know, I have, I, I don't know exactly, we were told that next time you know about what's allowed or not allowed as far as cutting into the road. Now, you just said what she said, that the village, village has approved another curb cut. We already had a curb cut for that carport is whatever.
Right.
I definitely object to it tonight, agree with, with Mr. Darrow's lawyer, that it's a totally thing, it's for subdivided property. Now, I don't know if you would miss the next time, it looks at variance or whoever is involved in this approval or not approval. I don't think you should consider the driveway as a possibility and the safety. Pool less so, but I think the pool, it gets Darrow's lawyer proposed, it's, it's an attempt to, to create possibility of a subdivision. Now, I have not seen many houses in Sack Harbor whose front of the house does not have a driveway. So I think the driveway should definitely be moved back there. Or is the new driveway just for the servants entrance? Or is it, you know, for everybody? There should be a front driveway, back driveway should be eliminated.
Have you come to look at the plan?
I haven't seen the new plan.
Okay, well, we can certainly share that with you, if you'd like. Yeah, sure. So I know what you're saying, what you're, what you're talking about is here. So this is where they want to make the new curb cut. They've, they've done their due diligence here, and it comes up, and the cars park here, and so for the entrance into the house.
Right.
And then they have this with the carport back here with the pool house.
Okay. Again, I definitely object, the driveway should be here. We don't need any more driveways in Jefferson Street. We already have for 20, 20...
No, I understand, no, I understand what you're saying.
So if there's any possibility of eliminating that, I would go with that. Now, again, we were told that the people who are buying the house it's too far for them to walk to the house. So why don't you create a walk here?
Well, they, we can't, just as you can't, yeah, it's their, it's their, their property there, yeah.
Is it Mr. Miss, who is it, Mr. Mrs. PLC that doesn't able to walk this long distance? Mr. Mrs. PLC that doesn't, uh, able to walk this long distance? You know, again, uh, will we be appraised of any attempt to subdivide the property?
I would think.
Of course, it requires an application.
Of course you will.
But in what way?
Why don't you keep watching?
You like the layout?
Yeah.
You like the.
I do.
The, uh, outside line, what, what about here?
It's pure supposition.
Yeah.
To imagine that there's some future application, there's nothing to do with the application as presented.
Well, I don't see why we must agree.
We, we have to, we have to.
Narrow.
We have to look at what we have.
Narrow and the driveway coming along to all of Union Street would also be a challenge. In fact, I believe it's narrow.
There's a lot of traffic on Union.
House tried to do something tricky also. So when they tried to get the house in Union's, on Jefferson Street, five Jefferson.
I know what you're saying.
That driveway, they were refused. I think the same thing should happen.
They bought two different.
Evidently, the curb cut has been approved.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
Curb cuts approved by the village.
Of the, of the applicant, the curb cut has been granted by village, so.
So that means you can do anything you want?
No, they can build a curb.
And besides that, you know, could I see a picture of the front of the house? Because, you know.
There you go.
Yeah, it's bigger one, easy to see.
It's a weird turn. Why is that an angle? But that's.
I, I don't. That's the front. It's, it's not angled. It's back.
Or, or the picture, sorry, it's, maybe it was taken with a 3D camera. But it is, oh yeah, I, I mean, perpendicular to the main house.
It's back, yes, but it's back.
Okay.
It's recessed, it's recessed. It's not right.
No, recessed is fine. Not, not.
No, no, it's completely.
Again, can you assure us that we will have the right to object to, to any kind of a subdivision?
Certainly.
Will we be notified?
You, you, you need to, to the.
But any, any subdivisions, you would get notified. There's a, there's a, um, public notice process. I'm not a hundred percent sure of the exact planning board of its adjacent properties are a 200 foot radius, but it would be noticed in the paper a hundred percent.
Yes, you'll know. And I know you're really interested in your.
You'll see.
You're really interested, you'll pay attention.
No, I won't pay attention.
Yes, you will, because you'll see the pictures on the properties.
Yeah, I've been here before, objected to certain things. So it was a house on Madison Street that they built. It was an old beautiful Sag Harbor house, somebody came and added an addition and turned it into a, uh, so-called, uh.
Well, I, we duly know that you're not, uh, happy about this.
No.
And you, and you've told us, you've told us, you've told us what, what you were, where you're coming from and where.
Six for five cars.
We, we need to move on, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Any other public, uh, that hasn't, that hasn't spoken yet?
Anything?
Anything different? Mr. Kelly, go ahead.
I'd like to address two points. When the granting of a term has definitely been, was spread.
We, we understand that.
And also, the hearsay representation of my, you know, colleague here about what building inspector said is not something that's.
I understand what you're saying. Right.
We would ask that if you put it running, say, gives us an opportunity to appeal that, uh, decision, uh, of the building inspector to the ZGA. So I would ask the board at least, very least, ask for that determination and writing from the building inspector.
Okay.
I don't think it would be in front of us if it wasn't approved, correct?
That's correct. Yes.
Uh.
Okay.
I think we're, I think we're good. I think we're good, sir. Thank you, though. Uh, let's let, we'll let her speak and then if the, if you have one question, we'll take it. How's that?
That's okay.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Maureen. So just to, um, we, we did need with the building inspector, the application would not be in front of you. We did.
No, we, we, we agree with that.
Yes.
And so I would love for final comment and any questions.
You have one more question? Can you ask right from there, sir? You don't have to come back up.
If you knew.
No. That's already there. It's already there. It's been there for. Been there for decades. It's okay. I know. So we're good? Anybody else need anything to say about it? So we can move forward on this?
Close the public.
Yep. Well, no, we don't have to close, we're gonna keep going because we have.
You're going to ask them to close the public hearing.
Okay. Also, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. Uh, make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, a motion to approve, uh, 12 Union?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Maureen.
Okay. Next. I need a motion on, I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah. These are the ones they just brought in, I mean. Oh, I'm sorry. There you go. Here you go. Okay. Can I move on? Uh, now, uh, we have a request to adjourn 154 Redwood Road. I need a motion.
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
All second? All in favor? Aye.
What date? Just provide a date for the adjournment.
Our next meeting is June 22nd.
June 22nd. Okay. June 22nd. Okay. 27 John Street?
I'm Ted Porter. Uh, my client, David Bolger, joining us. When I presented last time, there were a number of questions about the volume of the addition and how that volume particularly related to the John Street facade allows. Um, and, uh, there were also some questions in public hearing about the landscaping and the placement of the garage. And so first, I'd like to address. There had been a question about the setback, so we definitely moved the garage over so that it's within the 15 foot side yard setback. And there had been a question, I think we had put a hedge, um, along here similar to the others. And in fact, we are keeping the existing landscaping, which is a mix of both deciduous and evergreen trees and shrubs. And that's a photograph. There was also a question about setting down these trees, but we don't have to cut down these trees because of the garage setback. Nearest ones here at the pool, but the canopy is, the pool is outside the canopy. So then, getting to the house itself, our previous addition had basically four bays of an additional John Street as opposed to five bays with this existing house. And so we thought that, to try to be more deferential to the existing house. So the five bays on John Street and then only three bays on our side addition. There was also a suggestion to take basically the volume out here, which is, we tried to do that.
Yes.
And to keep this very much. And our, we kept the driveway, which everyone seems to approve repeatedly, so that's good. And the client in particular liked the idea of driving or walking down John Street and then coming in and looking at the house this way. So with the 3D renderings, you see, we have the five bays, we've done three bays, we've done similar sized windows, two over twos. Uh, the house is clambered, the, it will be painted the same color with white trim. We didn't put the same brackets that are on the existing house on the addition, we just left simpler overhangs, some simpler details. And then on the side, there had been a comment last time that we had a little stoop with a roof on it projecting. Uh, but the client still, I think rightly, wanted to be able to get in out of rain, so we recessed the porch, uh, addition, which allowed us to keep within a square foot volume of indications. And, um, we also did that as a kind of reference to another house on John Street. Doesn't match it, but it's, it's.
You dropped that roofline first a little bit too, didn't you?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think it's also the setback with respect to John.
Yeah. I, I like it.
The fence is a new, the fence is new or is the fence, is there a fence there?
There is not a fence there now, but that, that was something we've always had, is, uh, the hedge is there currently.
Okay.
So, great, but is this with and without trees?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's one of those games where you try to guess what's missing in the other picture. I thought maybe there was a window, uh.
I think, I think you're famous for the comment that trees and hedges can always be cut, so we do. Without trees and that's an existing tree, that's a new tree.
But you're showing them enough.
That's a new tree.
Got it.
And that's a new tree.
Without the trees, but also to understand that they're gonna be there.
Yes.
Right.
Thank you.
And, and also the windows look different between the tree version and the other, just, just the way you've shaded them, so.
You know what, I, I think having on the computer rendering, it does it at different times, so literally this is like an hour.
Oh, it's later in the afternoon.
Yeah, the shadows.
Wow.
Yeah.
Time to feel alive. Yeah. Isn't that fun? So, I, uh, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have a couple of observations.
Okay.
Which I think your addition achieves that differentiation between old and new. And one thing that's a little unconventional, shall we say, although I think within that mindset is a good choice and a good design here, is that recess, uh, well, subsumed first story giving the second story overhang. That's not a Victorian, not in that way. Uh, but it's, it, it's not a glaring difference, but it's a distinct difference from the porch of the Victorian house. And I think simplifying the root without the brackets, certainly your exterior brick chimney is also different architecturally. So all in all, and the fact that you dropped it so substantially below the roof line of the main house, I think it reads as a newer addition. Alone to the old. And that's pretty much the definition.
Yeah, which is right. Yes, I would agree. Yeah. I would agree. It looks like an example of cooperation with you and us.
Thank you.
Yes, Joe, we're both.
Okay, so this is, uh, any public input at this time? Nope, good. I'll close the public hearing. And we will make a motion to approve.
No, motion to close the public.
Oh, a motion. A motion to close the public hearing. Second.
Third.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. And now we can, I can move forward, right? Correct? I asked about public input, yep. So now we're at approval. So a motion to approve?
I'll make.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve 27 John Street.
And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Very much.
All right, we'll move on now to, do I need to close it? Bud, do I need to close the, the public hearing? I think you're already good. I, I, I've done it a few times today. There you go. Okay, we have three consent agenda matters. Uh, we have 150 Division Street, 52 Garden Street and 26 Bay Street. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. I think you should approve the, make a motion to approve the consent agenda. And I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Move on to old business. We have 23 Suffolk Street and 8 Concord Street on the corner. Pool house that looked like a house. It's still, yeah. It's a proposed. Here it comes. No, no, this is enough.
Oh.
Think of what it is now. What store is it? What store is that? Oh, yeah, Bay Street.
I know, it's the worst.
The, yeah. The house is the legal. Smaller version of this.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm sorry.
Oh. I mean, it looks a bit good, so, yeah. That's this. This is the little house on the corner.
Images of.
Trees.
Yeah, it's on the corner. It was a blessing, you know? Did you know that? Blessing. So helping. And good.
You know, it's great.
This is still old business, right? Zach, did you write up anything about this?
I did not.
Okay. You guys are here.
Right, this before.
You want a smaller? You lucked me late.
Yeah.
I can look around with you.
Yeah.
I can stop hitting that thing.
Um, yeah. There you go.
Window, this going up.
So is the west elevation what is facing Concord Street?
South.
South. This is the.
With the bay, with the bay window.
Oh, the bay window's facing, okay. Oh, I see, okay, that's facing Concord.
Yeah.
All right.
Like the front of it, right?
You got it.
So at the last meeting, uh, the comments surrounded the fact that the board was concerned that the pool house would look more like a house than a pool house. So Martin Sosa is with me, our architect, he's joining us via Zoom. Thank you, Martin.
Hello.
Hello.
So the request was to take, firstly, to look at, there was one example, member Long had given us another structure on the street. The red, it's called the shed building at, I don't know what it's for. So we went to the picture of that and sent that to Martin so that he could have it to use as a sample. But what we were trying to accomplish was making the facade that faces Concord less, look less like a house and more like a pool house. So we took off the concrete floor that was there, shifted it to the side, put a window in similar to the window that's red shed. And tried to soften the landscape materials all around, just to give this a softer look, a less manicured look. For keeping the street, the story of the street in general. And that was, that was the goal of our question, was to, to. But setting impact of this from the streets and blended in more with the community as opposed to sort of standing out. Martin, do you have anything to add that you'd like to add about your design?
No, I, I don't know if you have, you shared the rendering that we completed.
Yes, yep.
Just as a comparison. So I think essentially, we heeded to, you know, the board's advice. We, we try to maintain, you know, some integrity to the structure, but. We eliminated the front door, as you said, we made it look less like a, a, a house on the street and, and as more of a, as a secondary structure with the entrance kind of. Off to the side, so it's not perceivable and it's actually within the, the, the pool grounds, not on the street. We also added another gate, there's a secondary driveway by use of a concrete grass papers. That could function as a secondary carport, so there's less, less of a car presence there. And I think that also acts as a barrier to, you know, create more privacy on that, on the, the grounds.
So previously, there was a large gravel area for three cars, two cars side by side. We've eliminated that, so it's grass. So you have one car, two cars side by side, again, that house, well, the board might have two cars.
And is, is that off of Suffolk?
You're right.
Parking, is it Concord? Okay, all right.
Right.
There's parking there now, just gravel.
Okay.
But as I said, it'll be shrunk and so it's just one space and it's brasscrete.
And.
Better, better.
Yeah, I think it looks ten times better.
Um, I have a question, which is, I'm looking at this and there's this, um, field stone. Something that, it's the foundation of the building, but it goes further and sticks out and has a, a fence standing on top of field stone. And, and to me, field stone is kind of not really Sag Harbor. Is that what all this stuff?
So this is all there already, believe it or not?
Really?
Yeah, so it's already existing.
So it's a continuation. Makes a difference.
It's a continuation of the same product.
But what's it, what's its purpose now? It's just sitting in.
It actually goes all the way this way. All, it actually is this distance right now for cars to park in front of, like it almost looks like parking area. The lack of cover.
Okay, well.
Yeah, and it has, um, it gives sense of screening on top of it, so it's like a stone wall that's screening on the top.
Yeah, it also, if I may, it also speaks to the, the house on 23 Suffolk Street, which has that, that stone foundation. So we wanted to create a, a connection there. There's also a retaining wall that separates the, the main house from, from the pool grounds, which is treated in much the same way. So there is, there is some continuity and use of material there. And we thought it really enhanced the, you know, this, this property. It's such a small jewel box, I think the, that, that wall really anchors it onto the property and, and creates a nice visual delineation.
Okay, I'm convinced.
And the, the picket fence is wooden, correct?
Yes.
And it'll be painted white? Okay.
Yeah, it's actually the same fence that we used on the Amity Street guest house. So again, there is some continuity and, and use of materials and, and reference, you know, detailing.
The only. Comment I have is kind of undecided on these nautical lights that they chose.
Well, that's true, that's strictly for the rendering, I mean, I don't think, yeah, I, I don't think you should think those.
Yeah.
I think we could submit something that's, uh, dark sky, that fixture that's, that's within.
They're like dock, they're like dock lights, that's why I was just.
Yeah, no, I think that, that's just the way they were rendered, I don't think.
They look like hand grenades.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, they definitely won't be hand grenades.
Thank goodness. So do we need to like see the?
Well, we should, we should give you a, a lighting spec sheet just to show you what.
They don't need it, eliminate it. And then you'd be.
Well, I think, yeah, we can, we can table the, this, this cons detail and, you know.
We can, we can say for now that they're not, I mean, you can take them away.
We can take them off, yeah.
You can come back at some point and say, these are the lights that we want to do.
And it'll be in the consent agenda, so it'll just pass through.
Good.
Angry.
Is that good?
Right.
And they're under a roof, they're under an overhang, so I'm sure they're dark sky compliant just because of that.
Okay, that's true.
I've stated here, conditions.
It's just the three lights.
Different lighting, right? Different, three lights, is it?
You just say the coach lights and then it'll.
I'll say, coach lights could be removed. You, you call them coach?
Coach, I'd be free. They're outside.
Oh, coach, like a.
Coach, like coach.
Oh, like a coach.
Like a, like a, like a bus, like a coach.
I got you, I got you.
Put me in coach.
There, there are five of them all together.
Yeah. I was gonna say.
So I'll say five coach lights.
Well, can we, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to delay this, this process and the approval. So can we just submit something to be approved later? I think they need lights.
Lights, yes.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, yes, correct.
Remove them from the, from the approval, okay.
Right.
Perfect.
Come back later and we'll, we don't even need to come.
I just need to say that from proposal, that's all I'm just gonna say.
We'll give you some options and see which ones you like.
Can I make?
I, I think honestly, if you would just make the decision.
Okay. Hope it's the right one.
Yeah.
Make them gaslights, like you guys like.
Yeah, right.
I actually do like them, but me too.
I don't, I don't hate them. It's just that some of them are just over, over the top.
Motion to approve 23 Suffolk Street.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, good. So I'll wait for the 57 hour.
Okay, good, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you everyone.
All right, so we need to make a, a motion?
No, we already did, we approved it.
I say yes.
Two and a half years.
But officially, you know. Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we move on to 57 Howard Street. Are you telling me something, my friend, what are you telling me? Oh, you're staying?
I'm staying.
Okay. That's okay. I like the color codes, the color codes.
Colors are helpful, aren't they?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
New, new, interesting.
Yeah, let's just look at this together.
Right.
How's that?
Okay. Green is old, yellow is new.
Right.
Okay.
I agree.
So we were, before you on this one last time as well, and also during that same situation where you didn't have Zach available to you. But you also had some comments on these plans. So this proposal is to add a second story addition over a previous addition to the storeroom house in the rear of it. That is where the kitchen is located right now, with the addition of that. We met with Zach at the site and Zach's recommendation regarding the addition of the ceiling, which we have proposed. The last thing was to decrease the height of that roof more than we had.
Three inches. Three inches.
Six, three inches at first, to lower it as far as we could without losing, you know, all habitable space. So, and also to try to bring the addition in toward the inside. So squarely behind the house, like the scene. Down, you would have basically any useful space. Would not overpower. Now that. In this image, we're looking at.
Yeah, I'm not kind of rememberable.
Marcel Elevations, which is a left, if you were looking at the house on the street. So we've got existing and proposed, this is existing, this is what's proposed.
This is the new.
So we have the addition to the storeroom house, which is where the kitchen is. The second story above that.
That's good.
Sorry, okay.
We're multitasking.
Okay. We've joined the two pieces, the old and the new, with a glass enclosed foyer that will have vegetation on top of it. And that will connect us to our addition, which is squarely, I'm sorry, not squarely behind the house. It's actually set off a little bit from the house for a couple of reasons. One, this is Matt Bruce Wall's property and her garden is there.
Okay.
We're trying to keep it and Zach was there when it was, we were trying to look at it. So we're trying to keep that, that's one reason. And the other reason is just simply setbacks, you know, trying to give each neighbor as much privacy as possible. So that, that was the decision making around where to put the addition. We wanted to make sure that it wouldn't overpower the existing storeroom presence. And also wanted to be certain that from the street, you would still see the historic structure. And essentially, the addition would become really invisible in the background. And that was achieved by the placement of it, but also by the existing vegetation and the proposed vegetation.
That's true.
So at the last meeting, I handed out some images for you. So. I want the house, like, out landscaping, sorry, you have these.
Oh, yeah, they were in the packet, yep.
Now, this is a little different than last time, because remember how we saw it. What star, but that's, the second is like another layer of landscaping. And then the third is.
Okay.
So this already exists, this has. And actually, most of the. So that's what it would look like.
Do you guys want to see that, what it looks like with the landscape?
Oh, that's not in this.
Yeah, this I hand out separately, sorry.
Yeah, we, we have them in the.
This is all trees.
Trees in there.
I'm finding the elevations more informative.
Okay.
That's the house.
I just want to just see.
This is, this is a lovely fall day when the tree bleeds or full flower.
And that's why we did the three. We wanted to show you, you know, what it looked like without it, sort of halfway and then, you know.
Which page, boys, would you like us on?
Oh, no, we're just talking about soon, so.
I don't want to miss it.
Here, as opposed to siding, gotcha. The skylights on the main front portion of the house do not exist.
I.
They're proposed, uh, skylights.
I think that they're, I, I.
Well, there are two of them on each side of the roof.
On each, each house.
The main house.
Some reason.
So are they there, four of them, there are two on one side and two on the other.
When I read.
These guys are on the, the new, which is in the kitchen.
Right, but this, what about these on the old? Those are there or no?
I think.
I believe they're there.
I think they're there from what I read.
I just don't remember them.
From what I read in the information.
I believe they're there, yeah.
If they're there, they're not noted as being existing, anything.
Not on to you, but for some reason.
Already there.
Yeah.
They are existing, okay, fine.
I read. I read. Yes. I know what you're saying.
It's a little tricky, but on the very first sheet, number one.
The yellow and green?
The green and yellow, which is very, very hopeful. The bottom corner, number three, is it actually shows your upper story to be built in green. Um, so I couldn't quite read who was who, so in other words, this area, which is a bars board that's under the higher one, is your second story addition, right there. I'm just pointing that out to the board, that number three in the lower left-hand corner. The upper story that is shown as green is actually almost all yellow except for the upper roof board. And I think the point you're making is that you have now shrunk that in so that it sits back further from the outside walls of the actual house.
Exactly.
And so, if I may with my little squiggly.
Yes.
Number three, right down here. So this whole area here is yellow, because that's the second story.
Okay, right.
Oh, that's this thing, that's that thing. And what's old is green here, and also the wall in.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Okay.
Just, just wanted you to.
Yeah, it was just.
See that, okay, that's that, Carrie confirms that there's.
Carrie found pictures of the, uh, actually.
They're there, I, I read it, I read that, that, uh, and that I think, yeah.
I guess they're.
That they're there. On this, on the, it's in the folder, or it's in the proposal, or something. But I, I, are they going to replace them with new ones, or just the new ones? Okay. The windows are staying, the windows that are there, okay.
By doing so, we're dropping the, the roof nine inches on this wall from the existing house, so. By doing the work, you know, these associations, also being a house, you know, you wouldn't be able to, to see that.
Yeah.
There, do you know if there's a proposal to replace the, um.
Skylights that are in the old part?
I don't think it matters, because they're, they're not historic.
They're there, right, okay.
They're there, so.
Well, you could remove, it doesn't matter, you could remove them all together.
Not sure if.
I think they got them and they probably wanna keep them, I would.
Yeah, it's unlikely that they would get.
Well, if they decide to take them away, it's okay.
Although, the newer skylights are, are better looking, so I don't know how old those are. But you might be able to get a, a better looking skylight in there, same size.
Like a curbless, and then, you know, they could be lower, lower profiled.
Yeah, yeah.
But that would be a change in the roof line, so that would just be a, well, you roofing kind of a thing, would that require?
Yeah. You gotta get rid of the curb.
The curb.
If they're happy, just keep it there.
Actually, those are, those are flush mount anyway, I'm, I'm thinking of a flat roof, never mind. Yeah, sorry.
Probably good for.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes.
Any other questions we can answer, or say, if we went through some of our images?
I, I'm, I'm good on it.
So does anyone else have anything to say, or?
No, I'm curious to know what the neighbors think.
Well, are there any neighbors here, but we don't have, it's not, you know.
Public area.
No, 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 I know.
We have somebody.
Is this the house number fifty-nine?
Uh, this, that's a good question.
Sexually questionable, I believe it, it would only make. Yeah, it would only make sense that it was right next door, right?
Yeah.
It would have to be.
It's just that the numbers are not in order along there.
Come and look at it.
Yeah.
Oh, are they?
Yeah, the numbers are not sequential there.
Show him the front of it, yeah, show him the front. Oh, it's Max Griswold's house, that's the picture.
Yeah, she was, they were mentioning her, her garden.
He's funny, because we're here for fifty-nine, and normally you'd think fifty-seven would be the house next to it.
Right, 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 I got you.
Yeah, exactly.
This is the same number.
That's right, your number says five.
Five.
It doesn't say fifty-nine, because I sat in front of your house waiting to meet with these people only to discover.
You're in fifty-seven.
Just saying, so the numbering there is a little.
Actually, we're number five?
No, you're fifty-nine, it's just the nine's not there.
I did it on purpose, Zach.
I believe it.
No worries.
Okay.
Yep. I'll make a motion to approve.
Oh, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you.
Touch base with them on the way back. You can put them at ease, alright, so. There, there you go.
Do you leave it? Do you leave it?
Yeah. There you go, thanks buddy, yes. It's okay. What, I'm not gonna, whatever, sign, share, that's me. Twenty-three, oh, pardon. All right. This is a, this is twenty-nine Bluff Point Road, right? Twenty-five Bluff Point Road? I wish she was, she's here, yeah. I just wanted to. Look at it. You probably have extra. Thank you. It looks great.
So Christine, I have to get into the, um, the landscape plan again, but I think we're focusing on the pool fence.
Okay.
Does the question. So, um, just for you, our landscape plan, which is also in that packet, along with some information about the, a planting schedule for the, the landscape that we're constructing, and also the wetland restoration, which has already been done. And then to the gate. So, just for reference on the site plan, where this is updated, it's kind of an extension of the garden wall. So this is a, a room, we have a great brick house. This garden wall around this front patio is um a brise lay, so there's some openings in the brick. And what we're doing is, once it gets past the house, we have a gate connecting to the house, and the wall becomes solid. And it's two bys of brick, okay, so about eight inches. Um, and it's four feet high, and then it's broken up by a fence.
And, and that's the wall, correct, that's the wall?
Uh, correct, yeah, here, so here's, here's the line of the house. And this way, you can see there's a patterned brick, so there's, um, these like square areas or openings.
Okay.
So it's sort of like, like transparency, and then it becomes solid, um, where it needs to act as the pool fence.
Okay.
Uh, so then that goes solid all the way to the property line, where there's a, a shared property line.
Okay.
Is that brick, um, the same as the brick that the house is made of?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the house is made of these different colors of brick?
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
You have a picture of the house?
Not in here, but, um, it was, it was all brick and had a big, there we go.
Oh, this, okay, I'm thinking this is in, uh, historic districts, I'm like, great brick.
Yeah.
Yeah. In that case.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve twenty-five Bluff Point Road.
I will second it.
All in favor, aye. Okay. We don't want to sign any, okay. Two eighty-six Main Street, there he is, ready to go?
I'm Salsas Riley, architect for two eighty-six Main Street. And we're looking to do a window replacement on all the Indian units that haven't been previously approved. Uh, it's about forty-two windows, um.
This is.
I'm concerned with.
Two eighty-six Main.
I think we're gonna have to have our.
Yes, has, uh, Zach has, I'm going to see this.
Right.
Yeah.
He hasn't, he, he didn't go yet, right?
No.
Thought this could be before.
I do not believe so.
Oh, I think actually this was postponed.
So I see.
Yeah.
If you, if we go to A two, it, it shows a little bit. It says, previously approved, and then six windows replaced, eight windows replaced, previously approved, so.
Yeah, so how many are you proposing to?
There's forty-two windows that we want to, that haven't been approved that we want to be.
Forty-two.
Forty-two.
Wow. And it's one house, it's no addition or anything like that?
Do you know how old these windows are, or if they're original to the house?
They're old, I don't know if they're original, but I can't say that they're.
They have gravy glass and panes?
There's a mix, you know, you could tell some are not as old, because some mountain bars are like half inch, some are five eights, seven inches.
So you came before us, how long ago?
Yeah.
And, and had windows approved to be replaced?
Well, for the addition, we had new units for the addition.
Okay, so that's what we.
Those are the previously approved.
Okay, there was an addition originally. The originals, alright, so we, I think we need to set up a meeting with Zach to come and, and look, okay?
And table it.
So we'll table this.
Okay.
Alrighty?
Motion to table?
All in favor, aye.
Maybe I'll be back for my last and final meeting. My terms up.
Next one.
Wait a minute, we can't have that.
Thirty-eight Harrison Street, Scott. I'm trying to.
It's too many cooks in the kitchens when there's all of us here, that's the thing. Too many, too many chief, not enough Indians.
Careful with this one.
Yeah, I can't even say that anymore. This is new business now, do we have to?
Yes.
Do we have to close old business?
No, no, now we just keep going. So, so, so this has been worked on, Scott, already, is that what you're showing me here, or?
Yes.
Yeah.
And this is a project to approve. It's fairly simple, we want to add a couple of things, make some changes. It is a bit disturbing, so, this is the existing house here, which dates back, I think, to the nineteen thirties. So all of this has been approved. There's an existing accessory building that was there before, and this shed was approved, the pool was approved, and the spa was approved. Spa, at the moment, was approved, and this location, they'd like to shift it to the center of this.
Okay.
So what would be for you tonight for it is a garage addition here, attached to the house. And basically the same size addition here, attached to the shed to create a gym. And then there is some modifications to the landscape thing because of that. So, this is the old house here. Which, this is facing Harrison, and then Division Street is on this side. So this is the Division Street side, that's facing Division Street, and the addition, the garage is posed here.
Okay.
On the scent of the house, so in this view, it would be over here. This is the little existing shed. That was just built previously for.
Coming out of there, yeah, yeah.
So, the, um, serendipitously, the, um, the garage, and this new addition to the shed, sort of, centered on access to the swing. That were all by just about a foot or something, but pretty much they line up on an axis. So. This would be, uh, the view from Harrison Street, so you're just seeing a little part of the garage addition here. This is the side facing Division Street, so that's the garage addition there, so it sticks up about a foot above the existing additions. Basically, it has swinging, very traditional swinging doors, it's glass in the top.
Does, does it also incorporate, um, new living space for the house?
No, it's garage.
It's just garage, okay.
With the door here from the existing foyer, there's a powder room there that's sort of used for the pool. But it's literally garage.
Okay.
I mean, they're gonna use it probably this summer as a dining space, mostly for their car storage, for an electric car. So then, the rear. You see the side view garage, um, facing the, uh, facing the pool, it's this elevation, where you see the garage addition over here. And then the, um, so that. Looks like this. So here's the existing house, the additions, the rest of the construction.
Oh, yeah.
This new garage back here.
Is this the Mikowski? Is this?
Right.
Right next, yeah, but it was the original, like.
It was the original.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, yeah.
So then the other aspect is the, um, pool house, uh, gym. Um, so this is the shed that's there, and that's the wing of the addition. So the pool is centered on the. Door mark, and it's casing windows on the side. This space is Harrison Street, but it's quite a distance to that from Harrison Street. And those are the two other elevations. So that's where it reflects there. There's the swimming pool. And that's the addition.
So on the top picture, we don't see the.
No, it's way.
Yeah.
There. The other thing is that, um. So, here's the landscape plan. So, um. That's the original landscape. So, um. So this is the proposal I've taken. Originally, there's the shed down there, it was going to be just a, a grade between a grading of the, the land between the pool. And this area, there's quite a bit of a slope on this property, I don't know if you're familiar with it.
Yeah.
So it's dramatically.
Yes, you see it.
Sharply down here, so between the pool and the level of the shed is about five feet. And because we're adding this building in here, we're gonna need to put a couple of retaining walls in. Because of the steep um, slope to create sort of a flat area down here around the building. So, the proposal is that these are just concrete, but they only stick out about twenty-four inches. And they'd be hidden by this sort of meadowing here.
And that's the pool house, that building right there?
This?
Yeah.
Well, it's a gym, it's not.
Oh, it's a gym.
It's not a pool, it has no bath.
I got you.
It has pool equipment and, um, it's just a.
Okay.
It's, it's a gym, has no path to lose. They considered putting a pool house down here, but it's too far away from the subject system.
Okay, so would something cover the cement?
Well, it's gonna be hidden by the vegetation.
Yeah.
You're also, when you're driving on Harrison, you're just gonna catch it.
Well, you're probably not ever gonna really see this. You can see that.
Yeah.
That this, there's sort of an area of a meadow that's gonna be in here.
Hmm.
Um, because the.
Oh, so it's below. Yeah.
Okay, got it, it's not above.
It's low, yeah, got it.
This is low.
Right.
Yeah, got it. I was looking at the other way.
So there's another view that was done, which sort of shows from the pool looking back. So you can see that even the pool house is.
Right, right, okay.
The pool house isn't very tall, it's only like thirteen feet tall, so. Um, none of that's really, the only place you're really gonna see it is when you're in a building.
Yeah, 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 right.
Good.
So the other um, those are minor changes over in this area to accommodate the garage. The parking extends a little bit this way. And eventually the garden was eliminated. There's a new sort of stone walk here. Uh, that's the new location of the spa, which was here. I think other than that, I mean, there's some simplification of the landscaping in here. Uh, but if you've been there, it's very heavily vegetated around the perimeter already.
Right.
And then there would be an introduction of some stone landscape steps here. I know it's official, but somewhere. This proposal, they were sort of here in the pool, now they're gonna shift over to the stairs. That's.
Yeah, it looks good. So I'll entertain a motion.
I made the motion to approve thirty-eight Harrison Street.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thirty Hampton, anyway? No. Right, so we'll uh, table it. So I'll make a motion to table thirty Hampton.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And. Alright, now we'll move on to, oh, we have a thirty Cuffy Drive. So.
Anybody's here?
They're not here, but we've had, we've, uh, we've seen this. Yes, so we're gonna take a look at it and see.
They're demolishing and putting up a modular.
Yeah, putting up a modular. Did you get a chance to look at this stuff?
I've logged on to my email about.
I'm just asking.
Right, so they, yeah, they um, they have a modest ranch house and they wanna replace it with a modular.
Right.
Slightly larger.
This isn't a store.
No, no. They will.
Um, yeah, they've, they're taking a one-story and they're replacing it with a two-story.
Right.
Yeah, I just finished the house, right?
You're aware of this house?
Where it's true.
It's a module? Picture of the.
Yeah, this.
I, I saw a picture of the original.
I hit somewhere. Yeah, and I saw a picture of the module.
Yeah.
Elevation, so.
That's nice.
Nice.
Oh, right, yeah.
Oh.
There you go, I know I saw some pictures.
So why not, um. We should probably.
Chris.
Give them the demo and then tell them to come back with, with, with.
Chris wanted us to move it along if we could, if we can, because he's okay presenting it. They were all set to come to the meeting that got canceled. Then they were unable to be here tonight. So are we allowed to approve it within not being here?
You have to ask the attorney that. Here's the house.
Right, but that's not.
Yeah, and then there's, some of it is a picture of.
Better than that to look at though, you know?
Right, well, did you see this? So you asked.
Hand drawn too.
Alright, so you're, you're planning, my friend, right, to be here, uh, at the next meeting?
Right, one more.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so.
Counting them for weeks.
Alright. So you would like to.
I would like to see a render.
Move for, and move forward.
Give them a demo permit, come back with a rendering and then make sure.
So far. Makes sense.
I don't see red flags or anything.
I don't either. You don't wanna. You don't wanna start something else.
Right. So, just.
I know, we have a lot of things here. Right, right.
What do you wanna render?
Yes, on a rendering. I'm sure it'll have them, and it's part of this, the, this company. And uh. We can move forward on the demolition of the house that's there now.
Even though that'll take like a day.
But that.
Yeah, but it'll be very.
Motion to table thirty Cuffy Street.
All in. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, but how about the?
The day, the demo.
Can we demo, can they demo, demo it now?
Yeah. Want to approve?
We, can we do that?
You can do that.
You can?
Yeah.
We made the motion now to.
Don't trust me?
Uh, new construction, but allow for, uh, the demolition of the existing structure.
Thank you.
Alright, so we'll make a, we'll move to approve the demolition. I'll make that motion. Somebody second.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Aye, and then we'll move along, okay? So next.
And now we have a discussion item for an application that we have seen in front of us.
Move to demo.
And they have, um.
They're waiting for me to announce them. This is fifty-nine Howard Street, not by fifty-nine.
Come on down.
So my name is Henry Zedell. Respect to Rich Hampton and Joseph Arco. I'm the architect for fifty-nine Howard Street, and we are the architects for. So this was a presentation prepared, uh. With Zach in mind.
But he spoke to you, right, because?
On this way, yeah.
Yeah, this is a, you know, th- this is a discussion.
Yes.
So we couldn't.
So it was not pointed out to us that the discussion preceded other actions that have to be taken, so.
Sorry.
And I did try to get Zach here to the house to look at it.
I thought he, and he didn't?
No.
Oh.
I, I called him directly, he said, oh no, it doesn't work, you do that, I think Justice spoke to you.
Is that quiet, didn't he?
No, it didn't.
When I was, uh, Chris Talbot, I was like, Chris.
Oh, okay, Chris came.
Yeah, so anyway, we, we started in March and.
Right.
We were optimistic about that. And, uh, I have a long history renovating buildings, in fact, my first project that I liked. And so I, I grew up around those though, so I was very confident about our building, worked with this old house. The, um, we started carefully demolishing the old building, or to check down to ensure it finishes the old building. Saving some of the pump and pine flooring. We, we brought in subcontractors to look at the work, and long story short, they all came to say. They need more direction as to what we want to do, because as the, um, the house owner. Said when he came in to look to, to jack up the house, fix the foundation. He said he'd never seen anything worse.
You, you don't think that window's framed correctly?
Uh, well, did you, oh, did you pass up the?
I did.
Oh, no, sorry.
Why did you do it?
No framing.
This is just a, this is just a sort of a memory jog. The, the front, the front elevation of the sod is east facing elevation, and it's, um, fronts on Howard Street. The one behind it is north facing elevation. Look out the windows, you can see through the red land, you can see long out of that area.
Right.
And then there's two images in there, as I said. Are really a memory jog about what we encountered when we started taking the house apart.
Right.
And I'll, I'll go into that in a minute. Anyway, long story short, um, we, you know, we, when we started to demolish the house, we expected to learn the story. Of the underlying structure and essentially the story will be revealed, it's not what we expected. And, uh, I'll try to explain why, I'll try, I'll try to make this brief, because I think that. Since this is a discussion item, we're gonna be back here talking about it again.
Yes.
And I do have a bunch of slides.
Trying. A lot of notes, yeah.
So.
Well, if he hasn't come, if Zach hasn't come, he, he needs to do that.
He does need to.
And, and.
Right.
And we can, I mean, of, at least two of us can come also.
Okay, that would be great, because, uh, if you just take this one image, this tells the story of the whole house.
Right.
And what you see is that, you see a window that was cut into a wall without any preparation for the opening. And they ended up basically reducing existing stud framing in the wall to sort of toothpicks. To put the window in, the window has no header, no sill. The, the framing's.
A jack studs, no thing studs, nothing.
There's a jack stud under the window sill because they cut them for the rest of the stud out. And, um, the, the, the floor framing of that floor above, so that.
Oh.
Floor.
Oh, yeah.
Is all resting on timbers that have been cut. So the bearing wall has been totally compromised on the outside of the house. This is the story of the whole house, all the way around all four walls. The main part of the house and the shed in the back. You know, is it, yeah, so it's the story of the whole house and, um. The second image that's attached to it is just a picture of, um. Just a picture of the upstairs, which shows another apartment mansion. I mean, it was put in the house more recently.
Yeah.
But it has a similar.
I have that one, I don't know.
Similar, um, framing stills.
Oh, I see, yeah.
The, the conclusion I reached, by the way, from looking at this framing, because I look at it with a lot of people, was that. This may not have been a house renovation, it may have been a shed. Or a, a utility building for a farm, a utility farm. It's a, it's a balloon framed building, so that, you know what balloon frame is?
Yeah, go straight up.
Balloon frame uses the second floor just to stiffen the upper part of the wall, so that the. The load on the roof doesn't push the walls out. And, um, that's, that's what this is, but the balloon frame has been cut, and I'll show you in. You can't show them. So, um, the balloon frame has been, was cut and removed on the, on the west side of the house. And moved into a location. The, the.
You looking for the pictures?
Oh.
I printed out.
Oh, you did, perfect. So you know what? Promise I numbered them.
Well, they're in the same order, where that.
It's in the same order.
Oh, I don't know, they could have looked at it.
No.
Let me go, let me go print it out how we sent it to me, and then you can do it that way.
When did you send it to Gary? Oh, no, I changed. So I can actually give you these, and I can tell you, these were my copies that you can.
Yeah, they, they were originally in the.
So what would your plan be if you, to totally demolish?
Rebuild it.
Yeah?
Yeah.
And it started, initially we thought we could live with the old foundation, but what happened with the house in the back was. The foundation plan requires piles.
I, if you're gonna get rid of it, you might as well do the foundation too.
Right, well, that's what happened, is that we realized that the foundation that was there was not on piles, it was just in the, on the grave. And the, and the, um, the, the soil is unstable. So we had to go down.
Yeah.
Six to eight feet with piles. We're not gonna use driven piles, we're gonna use.
Helical piles, yeah.
So that's the, that's. So that's the, that's the plan now, is helical piles under this. So we thought, okay, we'll do that, and we, that's where we got Davis, was it Davis? Or, oh no, who's the, who's the house owner?
Dawn?
No, it wasn't Dawn either. There's a third one, it wasn't Davis or Dawn, anyway. He, God, no.
I don't even know anybody else that does.
Yeah, I know, there's another.
One of those.
Yeah, was it, so it would have been Davis, it was not Dawn, because I know Dawn well. Anyway, long story short, he, he came to look at the house to pick it up, so we could put the new foundation under it. And he said he's never seen anything worse, so then we had the framework come, because we were gonna have to brace the house, and, and he said, there's nothing to brace here, there's no, there's no point in keeping this. Every wall is a mess, every window opening is a mess, the floor framing is compromised, if you look at. So this is, yeah, this is picture two, I can actually use an average too, because it explains it, but. This is picture two, which is the window next to it.
Pictures, right?
I haven't yet.
So this is the one next to it, it's the same thing, it's cut away, no.
I didn't even see that they were shaved into the.
Yeah, they, and this one, I'll show you the detail of that corner right there.
Ripped into, I should say.
That's, that's what, that's what that corner looks like, where they've shaved it away. And then they cut into it, I think it's settled, so that the upper framing slipped, slipped past the wall frame.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
A lot of the sills are rotten, and, uh, there's a lot of rotting, rotting, um.
There's not even a good place to start to try and.
Yeah, no, this, so this is, this was the bearing wall that was balloon-framed to pick up the ups, the, the eve of the, the roof. It was cut and moved into a location in the middle of the floor, of the ground floor, with no.
Basically hung from the ceiling now.
Yeah, and this is looking at it from, from above. Um, and you can see that even the framing of the shed has been, something's going on with that, there's some new framing, some old framing, and stuff doesn't even frame in and attach to the wall, really, it's been, it's some of these, some of these.
Do crazy bracing to.
Crazy, crazy scabs of things put together, so this is the, the wall that was moved, it's the bearing wall, and it was moved to a location in the middle of the floor with no foundation under it. And you can see, the, the subfloor is a mess.
Yeah, I can see.
This is the north wall, um, and it has the same window thing going on, in fact, this is completely cut away.
Right.
And the bracing was put in by men at work who's doing, who's doing the construction, because they were afraid the house was gonna fall down.
I was gonna ask you, why, why is it still standing?
Well, that's what we wanted to do, but I, and we talked, we finally got Chris to come look at it, and he said, yeah, but you gotta go to the Architectural Review Board.
Right.
Okay, so that was in, that was in April, and it's taken us, it's taken us six weeks to get here. Uh, we were on the agenda for a meeting in May, but that got canceled.
Canceled.
I would go and see it, I'm curious now.
Yeah, yeah, so, and the flooring is a hodgepodge of materials, so it, it looks like one of those Sag Harbor buildings that was maybe moved there. Maybe they scavenged material from other buildings to, to finish it.
Put it together.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it was a barn or something, being the way they cut those windows.
Yeah, here's another wall where there's, there's two of the seal, of the ceiling, uh, the floor frame from the second floor coming down on the studs which have been cut away.
The crazy thing is that they've cut the most important members.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did it without reckless abandon.
Couldn't do it.
I don't think these windows are original.
Right.
That's what's there, and my guess is that these windows were put in when they put the shed on the back, because I think the shed postates that building at the front.
Yes.
And the shed is.
I would say so.
Is. So this shed here, I think, was added later.
Okay.
At first, I thought it was a classic Sag Harbor house where a whaler, you know, caught together a little bit, and he built just a one-room shed to live in while he or she were off whaling, and then they came back and built a bigger house in the front. But I don't think that's the story.
No, it, I mean, the style doesn't look to me, you know, like the front of the house looks like that's the original.
Like a little whaler's house, because the one right next door looks just like it.
Yeah.
In the front.
Yeah, yeah.
So the, yeah, the one on this side, which I thought was fifty-seven.
Yeah.
Looks quite like it, it's not the same color.
It's gray, right, the other one's got like the roses and things growing all around.
Okay, I was gonna say, wasn't this the house with the roses all over it?
But now it's next. Murphy, Murphy from Lucci, the, the one next door, I think it's the name.
Plans on what you would wanna do, because I don't even.
We're just gonna replace the house that was on the drawings that got approved.
Right, okay.
So we're gonna rebuild it the way it was, and, yeah.
Uh, can you use any of the old materials or?
The only thing that you would use would be the interior timbers, which would get framed into the walls.
Oh.
Right, so it's, you know.
Well, you have floorboards, you say you have floorboards.
We saved some of the pumpkin pine floorboards, which, and there's still some upstairs, which we hadn't taken out.
And how about the?
We didn't wanna take the floor out, because there's nothing under it.
Right, yeah, that, you don't wanna see it tumble away.
How about the fac, the facade looks?
Well, this is a piece of material that, uh, I don't know, initially, I thought there were attic windows here, but there's not, because we took off the.
It looks like they just put that on, on this.
They just put a wide board on the top of it, because the house next door doesn't have.
Oh, yeah, cuz you can see here, it's a very odd house.
So the windows, as I said, I do not think the windows were original, but I think they were installed probably when the shed was done, and, and you can see from the inside that they're, they're relatively modern.
Right, you didn't expect it to look like that, I didn't expect it to look like that.
And the fact that they just chopped a hole in the wall and then put in framing and indicates to me that it was not part of the original structure. So the other thing, there's a lot of, two errors in it, the, um, this image seven is just another one, this is the north windows.
Did you, uh, were you able to get any information, like, from the, the previous owner or anything?
No, they, they bought it.
Count their dollars.
And I think, you know, somebody told me that Gabe Scaroni might have picked in the house.
He'd certainly be a resource, yeah.
I mean, I guess the question is, what good is it gonna do us?
Right, right, but just.
It's such a mess, here's another piece of the wall where the.
Curiosity.
Frame cut away. So this is an interesting piece, because the floor is up and down, all replaced, and in the front vestibule, the floor on the left side or the, or the south side is flush with vestibule. Floor on the north side, which is the other room, is up six inches from the floor in the vestibule.
Those are all saw cuts.
That's really Sag Harbor, right.
These are all saw, yeah, right, saw cutting didn't really start until, what, maybe eighteen thirties or?
Yeah, so they're not incredibly old, but it'd be cool to keep those and utilize them.
Well, we might, I mean, you, you'll see that there's some, there were some Morrison tenon joints in it.
Yeah, that's, that's the good stuff.
Yeah, and, yeah, so then this is the other thing that's interesting, is that if you look at this floor here, the floor framing doesn't, doesn't attach to the wall. Usually, the floor framing sits under the wall.
Right.
Or on top of the sill that the wall sits on, but this, this, the floor frame here sits on the foundation wall, and the sill of the east bearing wall sits on the foundation walls independently, and you can see that here. Here's the floor frame sitting on it.
So that makes more sense if it was a barn, because then they just did, like, they do pole barns.
They just picked up the outside.
Yeah, and then they ran floorboards over it, that's why it doesn't tie in under.
Right.
So it's probably a barn.
So that, so, and, and you can see what the condition of the subfloor is, it was not a handsily assembled.
Yeah.
So your next step is to put a formal application and do, um.
Well, we wanna rebuild it, we wanna rebuild it just the way it is.
So what you have to do, just because you are requesting to demo, and it's in the historic district, that it will be a public hearing?
I didn't use the word demo. I wanna rebuild it.
Okay.
Is there certain things you can do, like, like, keep the facade?
Yes.
And then you're not, and then you're not demoing, you're not demoing.
We could have proceeded to just pick it apart stick by stick and end up, you know, covering the new part with paper, and eventually the whole thing's covered with paper, and you don't know what's what. But, you know, I live in this village, or I live in Northridge, and I come to this village a lot, so.
Yes.
You probably have to see Bethany on the street, so.
No matter what, no matter what you're doing, it has to come in front of the, um, board as a full application. Uh, we will set up an appointment for Zach, um, I was.
So by full app, it would be the same drawings we have.
It would be a full application, because you're make, you, you want to. Exactly.
New word, it's a new scope, it's a new scope, yeah.
It's, it's a, and so for that, um, it's the code is that it has to go for a public hearing, because it is in the historic district. Right, so, um, the next meeting that you could be on, or that would be the first meeting in July.
I'm sorry.
My buddy's building a house in Vermont right now, and he's like, yeah, I went to, went to the, uh, building department, he got permanent one day, didn't even look at the plans.
Thirteenth of July would be the next public.
March, we started to the new design, just to get to the meeting, and can we continue to work on the old building?
On whatever was approved, I would think, right?
Well, you approved us to renovate it in place.
Right, I believe, and then, and, and then you were adding on to it, correct?
We added a lot on to it, yeah, right, so.
Has that, that part hasn't, has that started?
The whole foundation thing came up.
Yes, come forward, sir.
Really, nothing is changing about what you guys approved, nothing, nothing, the foundation's gonna be the same, the exact layout to the, the, the window dimensions, the, the drawings will be exactly the same as you guys have and have approved, and so technically, it's not, I understand it's a different word, but at the end of the day, it's the same exact, it's the same exact application, same drawing, same footprint, footprint every night.
Okay.
Why don't we ask you about?
It's the demolition part that they're gonna.
I didn't say.
Alright.
I think you have to talk to Chris and find out exactly what the plan's on, what they're doing, if it's beyond the existing permit. And Chris would make that decision.
Thank you guys.
So, we've already approved something, but you now.
Yeah, you've approved the way the final product looks.
Yeah, right now you wanna change and say, um.
I wanna produce the final product.
Okay, alright.
It's just a different construction procedure.
So let's, let's talk to Chris, because I know Chris wanted you guys to come and bring it in front of them.
Yeah.
So let's see what Chris's, um, interpretation of what you're doing, and if he feels that it's.
I'm sure you're gonna want another, a full foundation, full basement now, right?
For sure, oh no, there's no basement, it's actually what we're gonna do.
Because of the water tank, right, yes, it's too low.
Cause the water table's too high.
Oh, right, I remember that.
And we're in the FEMA zone, so, anything, any crawl space would have to be self-draining, and.
De-watering, yeah.
Wants to go into a wet crawl space. So we've decided it's gonna be converted to a slab on grade.
Okay.
Okay.
So there'll be no crawl space. Which is a, a sounder way to build it. Anyway, this, these are other pictures, this is a picture of an old sill and a new sill and the framing and the mix of this sheathing, and, and there's a lot of this stuff in the house where the, the, the framing timbers are rotted out at the bottom, the sills are a lot of that.
And chopped up a lot of times.
Yeah, slightly.
And this just goes to show that even in the more recent interventions, where there was a, a later window installed upstairs in the south wall, they, they, you know, this was the picture that was in your pack.
Right.
And this is just, it looks like there might have been a fire in the house.
Right, when you look at this.
Yeah, and.
Yeah.
This, this framing is four feet apart. That's the roof, yeah, that's the roof framing. And, um, alright, so I'll leave this with you.
Once you guys got started, really.
Yeah, and then, this is the, this is the shed, this is how it's attached to the old part of that, this is the old house here. And, and look at this. Here's the rafter, and it's pulled out, it's pulled away two inches about from that. Just hanging on by the tip.
So you're saying July, what now?
Well, no.
Oh, maybe not, if Chris.
David said is that they talk to Chris.
Talk to Chris, and go from there, okay, okay.
So I'll leave this with you, we meant to give you the digital copy, this, this was actually.
Yeah, I'll go, I wanna go and see it with.
That's your notes.
You can have.
You can.
It's what was the presentation, I didn't, I didn't torture you by reading it all.
Put it in here, put it right in there.
Yeah.
Right, well, thank you so much.
I might read the conclusion, which is.
Drumroll.
Literally, the story of this structure is not a happy one, whatever integrity the original structure had is wrong, buried under a, under a pile of poorly executed interventions and repairs. We believe it does not support the idea of the structure being significantly historical important, present and unmeasurable.
Very good.
And there's more, but.
There's a key word right there, very good, alright.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Very interesting.
You're very efficient.
I tried.
I thought, I thought it was gonna be here for like, my first, my first meeting before the Harvard, it lasted five hours, I didn't get on.
Oh, wow, no.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for that compliment, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Alright.
It's up to you.
Yep, oh, so we need to, uh, motion to adjourn, I will make that motion, to adjourn, all in favor?
Alright.
So you'll, you'll get in touch with them once Chris, or Chris is gonna come? I know, I know.
Get in there?
I know.
Have a good night, everybody.
Yeah, it's great, it's so cute.
How old, how old?
Four months on Saturday.
It's wonderful.